Yanni and Margaret and Catherine. So we have a quorum. So at this time, we will call the town of Green Mountain Falls Regular Board of Trustees meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, February 16th. And the time is seven o'clock. So if you would please rise for the pledge. I have a flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Always a good way to start a meeting. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to this agenda as presented? Seeing none, I would move to approve.
One second.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
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 That motion passes. The next item is for persons present who are not on the agenda who wish to speak. There is a limit of minutes per speaker. Just to remind everyone that this is a time for you to state what you wish, but the board can't engage other than perhaps to direct staff. So Judith Piazza, are you on?
I am on. I just got allowed in.
Great. You're the first one on my list.
Well, I think though that I would like to comment after hearing Jonathan's report because it's related to that.
Well, that is a community forum, so you are welcome to speak then, and I will just make a note of that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I have Rebecca Otschke on my list. Rebecca, are you on?
I am, yes.
Are you wishing to speak for public, or do you want to wait until after the parking forum?
I would like to speak considering the closure of Hondo for the PRT Committee. I can do that now or when you discuss that.
Why don't you go ahead and do that now, and then we'll have that information for that time?
Yes, I would like to clarify the letter that was sent by Matt to the board recommending by recommending closure of the Hondo access to Catamount Trail because it's very icy and dangerous. And I recommend that signage, and I discussed this with the PRT Committee, of course, signage placed at the bottom of Hondo telling people, mostly directed there by the All Trails App. These aren't residents of Green Mountain Falls that do this. But they try to access Catamount Trail via Hondo, and the ice is virtually impossible unless you have ice climbing equipment. So, you know, like we had the road closed at the beginning of summer when CSU was working up there, we need to do something similar to that again to keep people from going up Hondo, because if they go up there, they're just gonna try to do it.
Okay, good.
That's the first part of it.
All right. I made a note of that for when we get here.
Okay, the second part is people can still access Catamount via Belvedere, and that is fine. But the sign, there's a sign on the Belvedere gate that says there's no vehicular access, but it does not warn people that there is ice up ahead. And so there probably needs to be a sign at the Belvedere gate stating that as well. Although it's passable, I think people need to be warned.
Okay, so I have a picture here that says dangerous ice flow, not recommended for foot traffic.
That's primarily on Hondo, not on Belvedere. Belvedere, it's still accessible over to the side. Hondo, it is clearly not.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Okay. And I think I had one other point. Oh, yes, up at the falls, it wouldn't hurt for staff to put up a sign saying, just stay off the ice because they could go over the edge. I don't think people understand that at the water tower. So that's primarily PRT's concern is the unsafety at the Hondo access, not the Belvedere access.
Madam Mayor, this is Angie. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'd be happy to bring some of these points up with our Public Works staff and see if we can't get some signage put in there.
I think the mayor has been disconnected. I'll keep an eye out for her reentry and admit her as soon as possible.
Matt, this is Angie. I've been having some technical difficulties over here as well. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, there we go. Jane is restarting her computer. She just asked if another board member could take over for a moment.
So who's the next one on the list?
Oh, that's a great question. Let me pull that up. We have, Rocco Blazi would be on the list next.
Yeah, hi. I'm gonna save my comments for the parking forum, please.
Great. And then Dick Bratton.
Hello, everybody. I hope everybody's keeping warm. Cool times. I wanted to comment on the closure of Hondo. I believe that's a good idea. And the signage needs to be at the bottom. Don't let people climb all the way up to the tower and be disappointed. So that's a good move. The signage at the bottom of Hondo, I would suggest should read, hiker access to Catamount Trail on Hondo Avenue is closed by ice flow. Use Belvedere Avenue access. And then over on Belvedere, I'd recommend a sign at the very beginning of Belvedere, hiker access to Catamount Trail on Belvedere is very icy. Boot traction ice cleats are necessary for safety. I also want to stand up for item. Live, stand up for Nathan Scott. He's applied to join the fire mitigation committee, and he would be a true asset for us with his experience. He also has GIS technical skills. And he's a heck of a nice guy. I have comments I would like to make when we get down to the parking.
Can I say something? I would like to talk, when the parking issue is up. I'm Kathleen Morrow. I live on Belvedere, and I would like to say something when the parking issue is being discussed. Can I be put on some agenda or something?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
Certainly. The mayor is joining again right now. Sorry, it took me a sec to respond because I was looking at the
Oh, that was awkward. Where are we? Dick, I heard you made comments. Is that correct?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, we completed a public comment as far as I can tell, unless anybody else had additional comments during this period for the
All right. Out of our four, did we have anyone besides Judith who wants to speak at the parking and signage presentation?
Yes, Rocco Blazi, Dick Bratton, and Kathleen Morrow.
Kathleen Morrow, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kathleen, I didn't have you on my list, but now I do.
Thank you.
Sure. All right. The next item on the agenda is our consent agenda, which is to bring into record the accounts payable from January 18th to January 29th, and the Board of Trustees meeting minutes from February 2nd. Does anyone on the board want to bring out an item for discussion?
Apologies, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
There was a, Todd Dixon had requested to speak, and it looks like he would like to share a public comment.
All right. Let me finish the consent agenda, and Todd, I will circle back to you if that is all right.
I had a question about the SIRSa premium. Is that an annual amount?
Yes, that's for the entire year of 2021.
Thank you. And also the electric. Let's see, the Colorado Springs Utilities Electric, it says fountain? That's not just for the fountain, is it? The about. Oh, let's see. What would help the date? 128?
Yep, I see that there. The charge for 2841 is the one you're referring to, correct?
The amount is 485.64?
Oh, 485.64, that's down a little further.
Uh huh.
So that, I believe that what that is, there was a one of these accounts has like a big balance on it, and we have a payment plan in effect with them. But I can double check on that if you'd like.
That would make sense. That would seem more like the street lights that we have the balance on.
Yeah, that's all connected down there.
Yeah.
Okay. I just, it said fountain was one of the things listed, and I didn't think the fountain would cost that much, but
Yeah, the fountain's not running right now either, so.
Right.
Yeah. But we'll look into that a little deeper too, and I can bring you back more information at the next meeting or follow up by email if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you. If there's nothing further, I would move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion by the board? All those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
That motion passes. Todd Dixon.
Oh, Jane, I'm sorry. I did have a correction to the minutes.
Okay.
Um. It's just a minor issue, but in, let's see, on number seven, the approval of the grant. It states that the that I said something about playground equipment, but that the ADA equipment is the priority. It's actually that the fishing is the priority because all of it's ADA, including the playground equipment.
Okay. Okay, well, that's
So I just wanna, I just wanna keep that clear. Thanks.
All right. No, that makes sense. That motion, so let's make the motion approved as amended.
Thank you. I will second that.
And we have voted, but all those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll do it again, and that's good. And by the way, Catherine, there will be a letter coming from the elementary school. Better late than never on that, and that's my fault, but it's happening. Todd Dixon, did you want to speak in public comment, or did you want to speak during the community forum?
You know, whatever works best. It's about item seven. You know, I can go now in case I get into a coughing spell, you know, with my COPD. I've been in the cold weather, I tend to get into cough and fits.
I understand. So if you would like to go now, so that we have those notes, that is all right with me?
Okay. My name is Todd Dixon. I live at 11045 Ione Avenue here in town. And I'm one of the people who's actually okay with having paid parking. I believe in trying to collect revenue from tourism to help keep our mill levies from increasing up to a point. I do believe that paid parking can help generate revenue for town. However, there needs to be an escape clause in the contract. If we go that path, we need an escape clause in the contract that stipulates that if the town's revenue, and I emphasize the town's revenue, drops below the fees, we have to pay the parking company. Then the contract, we really needed to go into like an immediate and automatic suspension. I suspect the parking companies are, will probably balk at some kind of an escape clause like that. But we need that in case we have another hard lockdown or something similar to that. And if you recall the Highway 36 debacle and the collapse near Boulder, CDOT had to reimburse the private company that'll finance the construction of that toll road for lack of toll revenue. And in my opinion, I think that was pretty much a risk-free contract for the company at the expense of the taxpayers. And we just don't have the resources to enter into a contract that puts the taxpayers at risk to fund something when there's not enough revenue generated to sustain it. That's the only comment I had, and thanks for the opportunity to comment.
All right, Todd, thank you very much. And if there's more, and you can speak at community forum, we can do that. Let's move on to item five, which is the fire mitigation committee alternate member approval of Nathan Scott. Board, do you have any questions or comments about this?
I have a question. Should we have an application besides just this letter here, or is this okay?
Oh, let's see. Is a matter, of course, don't we usually give an application, or have we seen one on Nathan before?
This might have been just me misunderstanding or not knowing a process. And so I was basically doing what I had done in the past, is the application would have been reviewed by the committee, and then the memo with the recommendation got forwarded on to the town council or city council that I had experienced back in the day. But I could put together, I'm sorry, not put together, I could forward via email the application to members outside of this meeting if they'd like to deliberate at the next meeting about Nathan.
Well, I know that we have changed some processes around, and so I didn't quite remember. But I think usually we also see the application, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right?
Yes, I think we've always seen applications in the past.
Yeah, I believe so as well.
So I would like to, and I would also say, I'm sure that Nathan is very well qualified. It's not anything personal with Nathan, but I think we just want to see the application as a matter, of course. So if we can just continue, I would move that we continue this to the next meeting, which I think is March 2nd. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
There's no further discussion. All those in favor vote by saying aye.
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 And that motion passes. To continue. Item six is consideration of a recommendation made by the Parks, Recreation, and Trails Committee to temporarily close access to sections of Catamount, post-awareness signage, and to contact the utilities for mitigation of ice flows. We did hear from Rebecca, who is the vice chair of the PRT, that they would really like to see a sign at the foot of Hondo noting that access is via Belvedere and make the sign more clear on Belvedere that there is a dangerous ice flow. However, they can access Catamount Trail from the Belvedere side. Ward, what are your comments on this particular recommendation?
The only thing with this recommendation that I'm not comfortable with is the directive to have town staff contact CSU for mitigating of the ice flows. That's not anything we've ever done in the past. This has happened every year forever. And I really, I really don't think that we're in the place to call and ask them to come and break up the ice.
I agree with that. The one thing that would make me hesitate about contacting utilities about it is we do get to use that portion of their property pretty much as a favor from them. I don't know that I'm comfortable stepping on their toes and asking for more. But I do hardly agree that we need signage that, so people won't step on that ice flow.
If the trailhead is closed, if that portion of Hondo is closed for trail access, I guess who is going to be responsible for monitoring when it can be reopened?
Well, it's such an interesting question, just that, I mean, it's always been, oh, it's spring, it's thawed, and then it was open again. So is it monitoring it, or actually, it should probably be Public Works who keeps an eye on it just with their usual route of plowing. I would think they would know. I'm not trying to assign more work to Public Works, though.
I'd like some clarification about signage. I think I heard that we need signage at the at the lower end of Hondo, alerting people to the closure at the top of Hondo. And then also some signage at the Catamount Trailhead, alerting people to the fact that there are dangerous icy patches along the trail. Is
Also at the
I don't know if we need
trailhead to direct them not to cross the bridge and go across
Seems like I heard both.
It's true. It's true. I went up there with Rebecca to check it out. It's dangerous. You can slide right, on Hondo, you can slide right off the edge of the cliff.
Well, yeah, I've been there and done that before. I wouldn't recommend it. So I think as a matter of safety, we need to make sure that it's well signage. I don't know that that's a question. I think perhaps the question maybe in some conflict is the direction to utilities to mitigate the ice flow. Catherine, what is your opinion on that?
I don't think it's appropriate to ask them to mitigate the ice flow.
Yanni, do you have any comments on that?
Not about that. I mean, I guess I would defer, given that I'm relatively new and dealing with the utility company to the rest of you. It sounds reasonable, you know, what you all are saying. I know that we have a sign-making machine now, and so I was just wondering what the cost would be for adding the signage quickly.
And that's a question for Matt or for Angie. I'm trying different glasses, I can't see anybody.
So this is Angie. If I may, I can answer this one. The cost of the sign is roughly $3 to $5, much cheaper in-house than out-of-house. We could get those up pretty quickly, probably within a week. If you decide to go ahead and do a seasonal closure on Catamount Trail, I could definitely see the the danger of the ice there. And we could certainly put signage up on Hondo and on Belvedere. But it does look like the signage on Belvedere is pretty sufficient, at least at the base of that hill there. That is Colorado Springs Utilities Road. It is their property. It's not necessarily meant for the public.
I think I'd like to see, besides the sign at the foot of Hondo, probably one at the the base of the trail there, the fence at Hondo, you know, the top of Hondo. And it would probably be wise to also have a sign where Catamount starts. Not only, you'll have to think how to put this, but also to caution them that the trail itself can be icy. Also, do not cross the bridge and cross the ice flow. Whether that means one sign or two signs there, I think we need to make it really clear that they ought not cross the ice flow. And that they that they need to be aware that the trail on itself on Catamount can be icy because we have natural springs up there, too.
Todd Dixon had a comment in the chat and said CSU may want to inspect the bridge for damage from the ice once it thaws.
And they are pretty good about tending to that annually because they're aware as well, because it does change their access. But it's always a good point, and it's good to maintain that friendly relationship with utilities. All right, Ward, do we have a motion, or do we have more discussion on this item?
So I'd like to move to approve signage at the designated areas. I think that's all, because we've talked about what the signage should say.
All right. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
If there is no further discussion, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
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 All right. And that motion passes. So on to item seven, which seems to be our main event tonight. It is the community forum regarding parking and signage. This is a presentation by our consultant, John Kane. So, John, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Matt, is it still okay for you to run the presentation while I talk?
Sir, I'm throwing up the screen share right now.
Awesome. I have one thing I need to pull up on mine. Okay. So everyone, this is our second community forum and presentation to the Board of Trustees. I have designed this presentation just thinking about this entire process and the community engagement that we've had around these questions about parking and signage in Green Mountain Falls. As such, it's a little bit non-traditional. I know it's not typically a best practice, a best practice to directly read slides, but in this case, I'm going to, because I want to make sure that all this information is, is out there and in my voice. I want to own what I'm saying here, so I want to make sure everybody has that kind of upfront. That's why I'm doing that, and it's a specific thing that I'm trying to accomplish. Next slide. This is the problem statement that has been expressed by your community. Essentially, the town of Green Mountain Falls has always been known as one of the most beautiful and delightful spots in the Rocky Mountains. The town is known for its small-town mountain charm, scenic backdrop, and access to world-class outdoor recreational opportunities. Over the past few years, the number of annual visits to the town has increased, filling the town's approximately 250 public parking spaces with increased regularity. Illegal parking in the town right-of-way and on private property has become a major concern, and the town has struggled with the increased burden on trash and public restroom facilities. This has impacted business owners, as it has become increasingly difficult to find parking nearby on heavily congested days. parking nearby on heavily congested days, causing would-be customers to leave in search of other opportunities. Next slide. Just an introduction, just in case you haven't met me or spoken to me. My name is Jonathan Kane. I am the Assistant City Administrator of Idaho Springs, and I'm the Director of Community Outreach and Engagement for Clear Creek Economic Development Corporation. I study equitable governance and asset-based community development at CU Denver, and I'm writing my thesis about the right to the city and parking management in rural towns with tourism-based economies. I helped create the Parking Management Program in Idaho Springs, and I am responsible for its ongoing management, along with community outreach and engagement in our city and county. Next slide. This slide got a little bit messed up, I apologize. I wanted to give you guys an idea of the process that we have engaged into this point. It began on August 1st, when I had my initial meeting with town staff to talk about whether or not there might be a potential to study parking and signage in Green Mountain Falls. Based on that meeting, we sent in a letter to the initial stakeholder group on August 20th. That letter just was soliciting participation in the stakeholder process to talk about whether or not there was a problem with signage and parking in Green Mountain Falls. Starting on the 20th, I held one-to-one interview process with the stakeholders. There was 10 individuals selected, and we went through a unified list of questions. I asked everybody the same questions in a confidential setting, just to see what kinds of themes we might come up with regarding parking and signage in Green Mountain Falls. On September 26th, we held a stakeholder workshop where we discussed those problems, and we discussed opportunities to address parking and signage in Green Mountain Falls, as well as community processes to talk about these issues. On the 8th of October, we submitted an application to GoCoResilient Community Program to see if we could get some additional funding for wayfinding signage in town. On December 5th, we sent a community mail notice of forum and survey to every PO box in town to make sure that everybody knew that we were going to have a community forum on this topic and that there was a public survey available. On December 15th, we held our first community forum and BOT presentation that just talked about the survey and the processes to that point. From December 5th to the 19th of January, we had the community survey was open, and we had 179 responses to that survey. Starting on the 5th of December, I also started contacting folks that asked me to about the survey. I'm still doing that now, there was quite a few, and so there's kind of a backlog there, but I am continuing to do that work now. I've also been engaging in participant engagement since that point on a variety of forums, Facebook, email, phone calls, all of that kind of thing. On January 25th, I met with your Trails Committee for a brief presentation about the project and the survey. Tonight, we are holding the second community forum and the first report of my presentation regarding the survey and recommendations I have for your board. If we continue with any of the alternatives that are discussed in this project, there will be some program rollout phase for all of that work, and there will also be some follow-up community processes that need to take place. Those are basically dependent on what alternative is selected and whether or not there is a need for more engagement and so forth. Next slide. Just a little bit about those stakeholder interviews and meetings, I didn't say, like I said, there was 10 additional, or 10 initial stakeholders that were identified at the beginning of this process. It was comprised of residents, business owners, Chamber of Commerce members, and community stakeholders. Next slide. These are the themes that we discovered from those interviews and that meeting. The first is that Green Mountain Falls has a parking problem. The second, that it would be beneficial for the city, or the town, I'm sorry, to manage parking. The capacity of town staff to manage such a program is important to consider. We should consider, ensure that the impact on residents and other community members from the program is low. The signage problems that we identified is that there is a signage problem. There's sign pollution in the town. There should be reasonable standards for signs displayed in town, and signage should be welcoming. Next slide. During the meeting, we came up with some goals. There was a lot of kind of brainstorming around what could make things better in Green Mountain Falls. I think, oh, I'm sorry, went back. I think that these are distilled down into the major themes that we heard. The first is that a quantitative and data-centered approach for handling visits to town might be possible if the town did have better tools to kind of do that work. The second was that the town has a very small budget, and it would be good to find a way to create revenue, to hire staff, fund road improvements, the swimming pool, restrooms, trash. The third is that finding a way to turn those that are recreating in the outdoors into consumers at local businesses would be great. The fourth, that reducing conflicts between trail users and private property owners is important. It could be helpful to create a trails welcome center, so that visitors to town would have a place to get information about their trip. Improving wayfinding and regulatory signage in town would be good. The town sign-making machine might be useful in the short term to start addressing these issues. Resident-only parking areas would be beneficial to the town. And any parking management plan should provide maximum benefits to the residents of Green Mountain Falls while maintaining the town's economic vitality. Next slide. Based on that meeting, we developed a community letter and survey that we published to the town on December 5th. It went into all boxes on the 7th. The survey was open for responses, this is the 7th, but it was really the 5th, until the 19th of January. We held that initial community forum on the 15th at the regularly scheduled Board of Trustees meeting, and I gave a PowerPoint presentation that just detailed the process to that point. Next slide. Survey results. We had 12 questions, and I have a couple typos in this PowerPoint, I apologize, I'm trying to call them out as I see them. With opportunities to provide long-form feedback following each multiple-choice question. This survey was designed to be qualitative, which is a research methodology designed to gain in-depth information about people's underlying reasoning and motivations regarding a topic. As such, it was anonymous, although respondents were given an opportunity to enter contact information for further engagement opportunities. I did analysis of responses and found that of the 179 responses I received, six were duplicated. There was one that was duplicated four times, one that was duplicated twice. The multiple choice questions in the slides that followed, I graphed so that you can see easily which are, you know, what the answers are. The long-form questions, I have grouped into themes and tried to display the top 10, if there is that many. There's a couple that there was six that were just duplicated, so I did that. Next slide. Question one. Do you think the town has any really issues related to recreational and tourism parking? 79% said yes, and the themes from the feedback were that residential parking should be preserved on residential streets. Charging for parking would ensure visitors help pay for services they use in town. Installing parking meters may negatively impact our town's image. Paid parking would allow for more enforcement and maintenance of facilities in town. Creating a simple solution would be best. Better signage throughout town is needed, and we need to make sure any program creates little impact to business owners or residents. Next slide. Question two. If the town does institute paid visitor parking, how would you like to see revenue from such a program utilized? Themes from the answers were pave more streets, go to maintenance in the pool, improve public restroom facilities, trail maintenance and better signage, to augment the town budget for needed expenditures, general infrastructure improvement, and trash cans and management. Next slide. Question three. Would you be comfortable with the town charging visitors, not residents or guests of residents, for parking? 56.4 said yes. 17% said they need more information. 25% said no. Major themes from the feedback were yes. Charging for parking is an easy way to generate revenue for our town. Concern about how the program would work, we do not want to take away from the town's atmosphere. The littering, dog waste, and congestion on our roads are a public health problem. We should make sure there are free options. We should not charge people to go to our restaurants and shops, and programs should be seasonal, no need for year-round management. Next slide. If town does institute paid parking, should free or reduced-cost parking for folks that live in close proximity to Green Mountain Falls be considered? Here we have a little bit more of an even split. 42% said yes. 34% said no. 23% said maybe. Themes from the feedback were yes, it depends on what is meant by close proximity. Only residents of the town should park for free. A free or low-cost option might make sense for locals. Everyone should pay. Concern about how this would be managed and enforced, and no. Next slide. Question five. What is the most important thing for the town to consider regarding parking? The themes were clear communication and designated areas is crucial for any program. We do not want to lose visitors. It is important that we control littering, trespassing, and other problems that happen when town gets congested. The town should have more enforcement tools. We need to keep tourists from parking in residential areas and private property. It is crucial that we protect local businesses. We need to consider that we have one town marshal, and he has limited capacity to handle parking. Next slide. Question six. Do you think the town has issues with signage for wayfinding related to trails? 78% said yes. 21% said no. Themes from the feedback, yes and no. We have a lot of signs, but people get lost. Maybe updated trail maps and digital trail maps could help. No. Improved and available trail maps would help a lot. We need clear and concise signage and communication. We need better signage for folks on Ute Pass Avenue, so they know where they are going as they come into town. A centralized trail center could help augment the ambassador program. And we have too many homemade signs. Regulatory signs should be standardized. No one should put up public signs without following signage standards. Next slide. Question seven. Would you like to see signage in town standardized? 77% said yes. 22% said no. This question did not have feedback, because it's fairly straightforward. Next slide. Question eight. Would you like to see the town replicate classic wooded signage or something new? The answers were classic, no preference, as long as it is welcoming and functional. A digital signboard somewhere may be helpful. It must be attractive. We should preserve the classic look of our town. Pricing is a concern. Maintain rustic signage will help us maintain our sense of place. Next slide. Question nine. What is the most important consideration in regard to signage? It should be short and readable, easy to understand. It should consider the view shed, tradition and aesthetics, no more sign pollution, uniformity, and signs should not be wordy. Next slide. Question 10. Do you think the town has issues where the trailheads are located in the neighborhood? Here we had 54% say no, 45% say yes. Themes from the feedback were no. If hikers know where to go, there is no issue. If the trailheads are accessible from public roads, they are fine. We should not restrict public access to the roads. Potential for trail access on Fountain Avenue along with trailhead. Pedestrian access is fine. Vehicles driving and parking on these roads and in private driveways is a problem, as is trash and restroom facilities at the trailheads. Vehicle and pedestrian conflicts on these roads are a serious issue, and trailhead should be located at designated parking areas in town. Next slide. Would you like to see the town consolidate some of the trailheads in town? 62% said no. 38% said yes. Themes from the feedback were no. Need more information. Many trails can be accessed from other points around town. This could be a good thing. Having access into the trails in less residential areas could be a good thing. Boulder Street Thomas Trailhead is overrun, and an actual trailhead might be possible somewhere else. There is liability in terms of pedestrians in the roadway and blind corners. We have to create a better management plan for trailheads. Litter, dogs, and other problems have become endemic, and it may be possible to limit some trails to one-way use to alleviate congestion. Next slide. Final question. Should the town consider expanding the ambassador program and creating a virtual trailhead in town to help control visitor traffic during peak times of the year? This question was poorly worded by myself. In the meeting that we had with the stakeholders, we used the term virtual trailhead. That doesn't mean anything to people outside of that group. What I should have said was trail welcome center was the idea here. But again, in the answer, we see 39% say yes, 40% say maybe, and 20% say no. The colors got transposed on maybe and no here, so just to make that point clear. On themes from the feedback, we heard no. Our trails are a signature. We need to make sure that we do not negatively impact them. This could be helpful. Not sure what this would entail. Perhaps another opportunity would be seasonal, seasonal trail closures. Paid parking could help, and we do not want to penalize visitors. We should encourage them to stay and find ways to encourage them to spend money while they're here. Next slide. All right, so based on the survey, my stakeholder interviews, the stakeholder workshop, and all of the feedback that we received over this process, I identified signage policy goals and parking management goals that appear to align with the goals of the town expressed in those, in those feedback opportunities. For signage policy, I identified three. The first is, is that better wayfinding signage should be created for visitors looking to access the trail system and to park in town that maintains the sense of place embodied by the town of Green Mountain Falls. Regulatory signage should meet Department of Transportation standards, and signage should be used clear and simply worded. We also talked a lot about the need to create beautiful signage, and I think that in my first point, I really want to make sure that that comes across. I think that the town identifies with some of the wooden signage that you see at the lake and in other places, and replicating that signage or restoring it to have more modern application to the trail system might be a really good way to build on the sense of place that Green Mountain Falls already has. Next slide. For parking improvement goals, I came up with several here. The first is that illegal parking in the town right-of-way and on private property must be minimized to address public safety concerns related to vehicle, pedestrian conflicts, emergency accessibility, and general safety. Many, many residents of the town express concern that there would be no way to evacuate the town or for emergency vehicles to access downtown or near the lake when town is congested and people are parked all over the right-of-way. I think that has to be the number one priority here. The second is that the program should reduce traffic and parking congestion in town, making it easier for visitors to find and park in designated areas to dine and shop and other areas to recreate along the trails. Third is the capacity of town staff, particularly of the marshal, must be taken into account in regard to the management of the program. The effect on the town budget must also be considered in relation to the cost of any additional program. Resident and community quality of life should be preserved, and visitor parking in residential areas should be limited. The impact on business owners from any program should be as low as possible, and any program should ensure that the town remains welcoming to residents, community members, and visitors alike. Next slide. I have some initial recommendations that I'd like to make to your board that I think you should take, no matter what other alternatives you consider for parking management. The first is that the town board should adopt by resolution an official parking plan. This document should identify public parking areas, residential parking areas, ADA-accessible parking, and other standards and regulations related to parking in town. I have included two example documents to my report. One is kind of a general template, and another one is that, is one that your town staff had previously been working on. I think between the two of them, there's enough kind of meat on the bone there to build a really great plan. My second recommendation is that the town board consider adopting a residential parking-only area in which parking is limited to residents of their town, their guests, and users of short-term rentals. In that recommendation, there has been some questions about how that would be enforced, and I think that that really is something that lies at the crux of which alternative you may want to consider for the management of parking in your town. If creating residential parking-only areas that are not covered with visitors coming to park on the trails is important, you have to think about how that is going to be done. So I do recognize that that is something that is, is, is true. The third recommendation I have is that the town board work with the Trails Committee and Friends of Ute Pass to create a trail welcome center near the pool where visitors can receive information about town and the trails. That doesn't necessarily have to be a staffed welcome center. There may be potential for ambassador volunteers that would be willing to work there. I've heard that may also not be possible, but there is a potential to leave trail maps there and have other digital resources available, so people know where they're going and can utilize the trails and the businesses in a way that is beneficial to the town. I recommend that the town board adopt by resolution an official signage plan that dictates standards for signage displayed in the town right-of-way. This plan should also lay forth a location for wayfinding signage for trails and public parking areas. I think there is a little bit of work that remains to be done there, and signage is a project, even with your signage-making machine, it can become expensive. Regulatory signage is not necessarily expensive, as Angie said, it can cost three to five dollars a sign, but wayfinding signage that is beautiful and useful from a user experience can be very expensive. I just purchased a landmark sign that was $27,000, and it's very small. So I think that, that the signage plan, there's some low-hanging fruit there that you can do, you know, similar to the conversation you just had about the ice flows, that can do some directing and wayfinding, and then improve wayfinding sign, or regulatory signage, and build a plan for that long term. I recommend that town staff utilize the metal sign-making machine acquired last year to install that interim wayfinding signage and to begin to address challenges related to trail access and locations of public parking. And finally, I recommend that the town continue to work with the Kirkpatrick Foundation to develop wayfinding signage for the town, along with design standards for such signage and funding strategies to install. Like I said, it can be very expensive. I think one of Green Mountain Falls' biggest benefits is you have a very vibrant artist community there that can build and design beautiful signage, and I think that doing that will And I think that doing that will will just improve upon your sense of place and create a really good and strong sense of community through that signage. Next slide. Alright, as far as alternative program analysis goes, I evaluated three alternatives for parking management in Green Mountain Falls. This was based on stakeholder participation, some of these came directly from stakeholders. And then the third one is the paid parking alternative. So we have first off status quo, maintaining the status quo. Alternative two is installing donation boxes and attempting to increase citations in town for parking violations. Alternative three is a contractor managed parking system in town to include paid public parking. Next slide. Evaluation criteria, basically I built these off the questions that we kind of got from the survey process and the stakeholders. Number one, would the program reduce parking and traffic congestion in town? Number two, would the program reduce illegal parking in the town right of way and on private property? Number three, would the program improve the capacity of the town marshal to manage public safety in town limits? Number four, would the program allow the town to create and manage trails welcome center? Residential only areas, better trash or public restroom facilities and additional trash facilities. And finally, what is the impact on residents and business owners of such a program? Next slide. Alright, alternative one, which is maintain the status quo. As I said, I have some universal recommendations and I am assuming that you would you would take those actions. So the town would formally adopt an official town parking plan that would designate illegal and legal parking practices throughout the town. The town would also adopt an official signage plan and begin working on short and long-term strategies to improve both regulatory and wayfinding signage throughout town. To answer the first question, I believe this alternative would do nothing to address parking and traffic congestion in town as there is no mechanism in place to create open spots in the parking lots or other designated areas of the city. Second question, would the program reduce illegal parking in the town right of way and on private property? I believe the parking plan would give the town better enforcement powers to deal with folks that are parking illegally in the right of way and on private property. However, the town marshal would not necessarily have the time required to end this practice completely. Number three, would the program improve the capacity of the town marshal to manage public safety in town limits? This alternative would not provide the town marshal with the capacity to enforce time-based violations of parking areas as practices like tire chalking have been deemed illegal. Additionally, the town marshal is already spending nearly sixty hours a week enforcing public safety in town and does not have the capacity to take on additional parking management duties as would be required to materially change the situation. This alternative would also not allow for the hiring of additional staff to assist the marshal with these duties. Question four, would the program allow the town to create and manage trails welcome center? Residential only areas, better public restroom facilities and additional trash facilities. It would not provide the town with any additional capacity to address issues related to public restrooms or trash in town. It would also provide no revenue required to create a trails welcome center for visitors or a revenue source to improve wayfinding signage. Finally, what is the impact on residents and business owners of such a program? This alternative would create a cost and administrative, a cost in terms of administrative time and materials necessary to create a residential parking zone in town with no revenue source to support it. There would also be costs related to creating installing signage for wayfinding throughout the town. Participants in the survey expressed that when parking congestion is high, it is difficult for patrons to visit. This will likely continue to be the condition downtown and will continue to negatively impact businesses. The town marshal will continue to be the only public safety employee in the town and his capacity to address parking management issues is limited. Next slide. Here's a scorecard and conclusion. I think that though this alternative could potentially somewhat reduce illegal parking in town and could potentially have a positive impact on residents. It does not meet the goals of the community as expressed by the stakeholder group or the community survey. It does not provide the town with the capacity to better manage the impacts of visitor traffic on the town. And it does not reduce parking or traffic congestion in town during high tourism periods. As such, I do not recommend this alternative. Next slide. This option was presented to me by a member of the community. In this alternative, you would take much of the same action as alternative one, formally adopting an official parking plan and signage plan. But you would also adopt. You would not adopt, that's the wrong word, you would install donation boxes in the parking areas for people to donate money when they're here. And you would also try to increase citations issued by the town marshal for illegal parking practices like in the town right of way or on private property. Question one, would the program reduce parking and traffic congestion? This alternative would do nothing to address parking and traffic congestion in town as there is no mechanism in place to create open spots in the lots or other designated areas of the city. Question two, would the program reduce illegal parking in the town right of way and on private property? This parking plan would still give the town better enforcement powers to deal with folks that are parking illegally in the right of way or on private property. However, the town marshal would still not necessarily have the time required to end this process completely. Would the town improve the capacity of the marshal to manage public safety in the limits of this of the town? This alternative would not provide the town marshal with the capacity to enforce time-based violations of parking areas as practices like tire chalking have been deemed illegal. Additionally, the town marshal is already spending sixty hours a week enforcing public safety and does not have the capacity to take on additional parking management duties as would be required to materially change the situation. This alternative would not allow for the hiring of additional staff to assist the marshal with these duties. Would the program allow the town to better manage the restrooms and litter through town? The town likely would generate some revenue from increased citations and donation boxes. Although it is unlikely that such a program would generate consistent or adequate revenue that could be used to increase the town's capacity to manage such program. Additionally, there are some administrative concerns for using a donation box to collect money as a town or municipality. Angie, do you want to talk about your fiduciary duty as the town manager to make sure that funds are auditable and and are handled in a responsible way?
Absolutely, so when you have a cash, a large cash process like that. It in a like a tube or some sort of a donation box. There's an opportunity for theft, huge opportunity for theft. Those would have to be emptied daily by a person. Each one of those envelopes or donations would have to be counted out. Those are cash money would have to be counted out and deposited daily in the bank account. We don't leave cash around in town hall at all. There's an opportunity again there for theft. And it's, you know, from an accounting standpoint and an auditing standpoint, it's having large amounts of cash around at town hall on a donation basis is just not not a best practice.
Okay. Finally, the last question here, what is the impact on residents and business owners of such a program? This alternative creates the same costs in terms of administrative times and materials necessary to create the residential parking zone with a very small and unreliable revenue source to support it. There would also be costs related to creating and installing signage for wayfinding. And participants in the survey again had expressed that when parking congestion is high, it is difficult for patrons to visit. This will likely continue to be the condition downtown and will continue to negatively impact businesses. The town marshal will continue to be the only public safety employee in town and his capacity to address parking management issues is limited. Next slide. I believe that this alternative could some potentially somewhat reduce illegal parking in town and could potentially have a positive impact on residents. But it does not meet the goals of the community as expressed by the stakeholder group or the survey. It does not provide the town with the capacity to better manage impacts of visitor traffic on the town. And it does not reduce parking or traffic congestion in town during high tourism periods. As such, I do not recommend this alternative. Next slide. Alternative three. In this alternative, the town would take the same actions as alternative one and two, but would also create and publish an RFP for parking services within town limits. This parking contractor would provide the town with directional signage related to the parking facilities and trail system. Paid parking ambassadors that would actively manage and enforce parking restrictions in public parking areas and could be involved in the creation and management of a trails welcome center. Question one, would the program reduce parking and traffic congestion in town? This program would quickly create significant physical and digital resources to direct visitors to designated parking areas in town. It would additionally provide the town with additional staff to enforce parking management infractions in town significantly adding to the capacity of the marshal to deal with other hazardous and unsafe parking conditions in the right of way and on private property. The program could create free parking for downtown businesses and additionally create economic incentive for folks to avoid parking in public parking spaces for very long periods of time. All these factors would make it easier for visitors to find parking when they come to Green Mountain Falls, better managing the congestion related to finding a spot in town. Question two, would the program reduce illegal parking in the town right of way and on private property? The parking plan would give the town better enforcement powers to deal with folks that are parking illegally in the right of way and on private property. And the parking ambassador's staff would be able to assist the town marshal, it's supposed to say marshal, not manager, I apologize. In the management and enforcement of public parking issues in town, giving him more capacity to manage the illegal and hazardous parking issues. Number three, would the program improve the capacity of the town marshal to manage public safety in town limits? The parking ambassador's staff would be able to assist the town marshal in the management and enforcement of public parking issues in town, giving him more capacity to deal with illegal and hazardous parking conditions. Number four, would the program allow the town to better manage the restrooms and litter through town? This alternative would provide the town with a steady and dependable source of revenue to augment efforts to better manage public park or facilities through the town. It would also provide a revenue source for future improvements such as the upkeep of the pool, paving of roads, hiring of staff, etc. And finally, what is the impact on residents and business owners of such a program? Under this alternative, parking turnover of spaces downtown would make it easier for visitors and residents to find spaces near community assets downtown. Residents of their town, their guests and short-term rental owners would not be paying to park in any areas of the city. And rate structures could be set up so as to promote free dining and shopping in Green Mountain Falls. It will provide the town with additional capacity to enforce resident only parking areas. And there could be further opportunities to provide free or low-cost parking passes to community members living outside the city limits or to employees of area businesses. Next slide. On the scorecard, I believe that this alternative addresses all of the criteria that were considered under the scope of the study. Given that visitor traffic to Green Mountain Falls increased exponentially last year during the COVID nineteen pandemic and the fact that a similar condition may exist this summer and development at Red Devil Mountain will eventually increase traffic to the town. I recommend that the town board consider a two-year pilot managed parking program to be managed by a contractor selected through an RFP process to manage public parking resources in Green Mountain Falls. Next slide. Recommendations for program, I have been looking at kind of tourism traffic through Green Mountain Falls and kind of how those seasons work. These are kind of general guideline recommendations based on what I think might work to start off and what I think is appropriate for the community to to think about. The first is that I think an initial program season should run between April and October. I don't believe you necessarily need to run a year-round program right now. And any contract you sign, you could modify that later if you decided you needed to turn it on or off at some point. So I think that that seems to be pretty close to the hiking season that you experience is that April to October run. I think that's a good, a good season for this program to run. The rest of the year it would be free, still governed by the parking plan that you would create, the the official parking plan of the city. I recommend that the initial hours of the program be from six AM to four PM. And parking should be free and controlled by the parking plan and off hours similar to off-season months. This will reduce the impact on restaurants and shops in the afternoon. I recommend that the program should offer everyone two hours of free parking right off the bat. And then the next two hours of parking should cost two dollars each, so if you stay for four hours, your total cost would be four dollars. After that time, I believe that the parking should increase in costs at a rate of five dollars an hour. So if you stay for five hours, you would pay nine dollars. If you stay for six hours, you'd pay fourteen dollars onward and upward to a maximum daily charge of thirty-four dollars for ten hours, which is just under four dollars an hour for for a parking rate. That would be the maximum daily rate is that thirty-four dollars. These costs could always be adjusted in the future if you deem it necessary. For instance, you could offer more free parking, you could offer more of the cheap parking. You know, whatever the case may be that works for your community. I also, on my last recommendation here, I'm recommending that this program be initially operated between Friday and Sunday with an option with the parking company to expand those dates if necessary. You may discover that once it's working, that the benefits to residents and everyone is is such that it may be beneficial to operate this seven days a week. Especially during the really peak season in the summer. But I think that starting with that Friday to Sunday window may be beneficial to the town just to figure out how it's working and see if that's something you want to do. Again, if you do decide to go with an RFP and a contractor, this could be written into a contract. It's written into our contract that we can, we can change these rates and structures at any time. Additionally, just to, this is a kind of a convenient point to address it. Mr. Dixon had noted that it would be good to make sure there's an escape clause in case the fee for the parking management exceeds revenue. I think there's a couple of structures that you can take that would would kind of cover that base. And I would highly recommend that you do that. And I think that that's something that can be relatively easily accomplished either through a gross revenue share, net revenue share or some kind of percentage-based fee, which in my experience, most parking companies will will consider as long as, you know, you work all the details out. Next slide. Okay, as far as revenue estimate goes, the town has approximately two hundred and fifty public parking spaces. If we assume that during peak tourism season, a hundred and twenty-five of those spaces are utilized by visitors parking for longer than four hours is kind of like what I was thinking. I have that, I wrote that wrong, basically you have two hundred and fifty parking spaces. What I did for your model is I I calculated what it would generate at a hundred percent capacity at a six-hour visit on average. And then fifty, seventy-five and twenty-five percent capacity. The reason I did that is that we know that not all the parking is going to be taken by hikers. Not all the parking Parker, not all the hikers are going to go for six-hour hikes. Some of them are going to be in that four-hour range where the parking doesn't escalate in cost. So that's how I kind of built this model, it's very conservative. I calculated based on twenty-five percent of the parking facility facilities being used for that long-term hiking parking in the months of May, September and October. Fifty percent of the parking facilities being utilized for long-term parking in the months of June, July and August. And I also went with the the model of just using it between Friday and Sunday. Next slide. Okay, this slide has a slight typo on it, you can see here on the bottom on the words is hundred percent system under seventy-five, it says four thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. That's actually supposed to read eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. It didn't transfer right, but in the next slide, all the numbers are correct. So basically, what I've done here is built the model based on what I just told you. If you use this model at a hundred percent operation, the stalls will probably turn one point six seven times a day. A turn is just how many visits to one stall you would receive. If we assume that kind of six-hour stay limit, then your average ticket would be for fourteen dollars. Your average daily stall rate would be twenty-three dollars and you'd gross annually eight thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars per stall. We know that that's not accurate, you're not going to have a hundred percent of the system working. So if you look at the chart there on the side, what I've done is broken it down so that for Friday to Sunday, twenty-five percent capacity of the system running in May would generate about seventeen thousand dollars at that six-hour trip. June, July, August, I have that set to fifty percent capacity, that's thirty-five thousand a month. September and October back down to that twenty-five percent capacity at seventeen thousand a month. That would gross probably in a very conservative estimate, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars a year. Now there are some, you know, this is a model based on my best thoughts about tourism and how that works. I think that in Green Mountain Falls as you go, one of the things that this will do is it will give you accurate numbers about how your parking is being used. That was one of the initial goals of the community is to have a more quantitative approach to parking and to have tools to manage it. This is kind of based on what very similar communities generate for parking. But you may find out that you don't want to run it just Friday through Sunday, you want to run it in July every day, so your numbers may bump up. You may see a month of May where you get blizzards where that goes down just because like you said, there's ice flow issues or you know, whatever the case may be, the bridge goes out, whatever needs to be fixed happens. So you know, these are just kind of like guestimates based on twenty-five and fifty percent of occupancy of the of the facility, which seems fairly reasonable. Next slide. I just wanted to thank you all. The Board of Trustees, Town Staff, all the community members that took time out of your day to talk to me about parking for letting me talk to you guys about this stuff. I think it was very interesting and I learned, I personally learned a lot working with your community. I hope I accurately reflected the things that you all told me into this report. I do want to say that these recommendations I made are advisory, they're non-binding. This is a decision for your town to make based on what the best the best decision for your town is. One of the things I like to say when we talk about things like this in my town is that it's always context sensitive and there's always a lot of things that matter when you think about doing a program like this. One thing maybe, one thing that I heard a lot of people bring up is that, you know, that there is some concern that managed parking might bring an end to the atmosphere of Green Mountain Falls or make it unwelcoming. And I would posit that some And I would posit that sometimes when town is congested and there's a lot, a lot of people there and nowhere to park, and people are going up and down residential avenues, parking illegally in people's driveways and all of that kind of thing, that also takes away from the atmosphere of your town. This is one of those kind of great issues where it's not necessarily paid parking is great, paid parking is bad. Those criteria and thinking about what you're trying to solve for here are what are really important. And I wanted to reflect that in this presentation. I know it was a little bit long, so I'm going to go ahead and stop talking now, but I am available for questions.
All right, John, thank you very much. As always, it's a, it's an interesting question. There's a lot of, there's a lot of nuances, and there's a lot of nuances more than just yes or no. And at this time, I think we'll hear from the community that wanted to speak and then perhaps circle around with some questions and the board. Judith Piazza, I knew you wanted to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Judith Piazza, 11160 Belvedere. And wow, I actually am kind of like flabbergasted and maybe don't really want to go first, but I will. I feel that the survey was very diverse. And, and in that it has advantages and disadvantages. It really spoke to signage, it spoke to trails, it spoke to parking, and some other things probably thrown in there as well, which makes it a little bit tricky to, to, to understand and to really come forward with an action plan. But basically, I want to acknowledge that even in December, when we had the first community forum, I felt that there was an already listening for paid parking. And so I, I feel, Jonathan, I thank you so much because I feel like you kind of turned away from that, especially not so much maybe with the survey responses, but with the petition that showed that there was a number of people, residents and business owners. In fact, every business owner cautioned to not initiate paid parking, no matter the nuance, no matter the qualifications. Every business owner signed that petition asking that free parking be maintained. So I feel like that's a really important part. That was in addition to about 60-something residents who also feel that under no qualification or nuance that they would welcome paid parking in town. But, you know, besides all that, I mean, I really respect all the work you did and everybody has done in this regards. And it'll be really interesting to see how this rolls out, but I'm really urging caution and slowness that once we have initiated any kind of paid system, that will be in perpetuity, most likely. It would be very difficult to stop that. And I just feel like we have not exhausted all the possibilities of the ambassador program that has not even been able to run for a season. Last summer was unprecedented and unpredictable situation with the pandemic. I know that we've had more and more people coming in for the, even before the pandemic. But last summer was like, like you said, Jonathan, I can't remember your words, but it was like the straw that broke the camel's back in a sense. So I'm really urging that we are much slower and give some of these other procedures and processes and possibilities a chance, including the ambassador program, including better signage. I would love to see a sign that was made by the sign machine from the town. Then maybe, I don't know, Angie, maybe you can hold one up for us at some point, but I would love to see that. I don't know what they look like, and I'm really curious about that. Yeah, so I would want to exhaust all these other possibilities first before anything was decided as far as starting anything paid. I also questioned, at one point, we said there were 400-plus parking spaces in town. So I don't know how it got to 250, but I'm curious about that, and I would like to have some explanation about that. I'm, I'm concerned that anything that had to do with payment would send people looking for free parking on residential streets, which would be horrible. We already have more and more traffic coming up just because they want to see, but if they're looking for, even if there's no parking signs or something like that, which I also question this, like how many signs can we really have in our town? So I'm concerned about that. You didn't mention the fee, Jonathan, that the contractor would take, which is substantial. Up to 70% of the income, of gross income, would go towards the contractor. So that's important for everybody to know. And I think I'll stop there because I'm getting to the end. Thank you for hearing me. I'm sure there's more, but that's enough for now.
All right, thank you. Rocco, you're next on my list.
Hi, Rocco Blazi, 10955 Belvedere Ave. I'd like to thank Jonathan Kane. I believe you provided your consulting services to the town for free, so thank you. I appreciate the disclaimer in the presentation that the survey results are qualitative. Meanwhile, the stakeholder meeting, the main goal stressed the need rightly for a quantitative data-centered approach. Given the timeframe of the study, there was really no chance to gather such quantitative data to inform the recommendations as well as the assumptions made regarding potential revenue. So I think I'm with Judy Piazza in urging caution and slowness in collecting data so that we can all have an informed, more informed discussion. I would like to highlight one survey response from question 11. It may, it mentions that there is liability in terms of pedestrians in the roadway and blind corners. I live on a road that accesses a main trail in town. The speed limit's 20 miles an hour, but I know that's too fast regularly, especially in the summer. Given hikers, but also the abundance of wildlife, any liability while you're behind the wheel rests squarely with the driver. Please slow down. To this end, the agenda packet highlights what we all know, the limited capacity of our town marshal. This is certainly understandable, and I ask the trustees to prioritize law enforcement patrolling with the marshal and his volunteer deputies during the one-third of his 60 hours a week to do the busy summer weekends and see how that helps with increased signage. Also seek opportunities with county sheriff departments for weekend summer patrols. Donations, think outside the box. Donations via smartphone QR code. The accounting would be very simple. You wouldn't have to handle cash. That could be an option. Finally, I ask that the trustees, that any future decisions related to managed or paid parking proposals, which would fundamentally change the character of our small community, be left to a ballot vote of all Green Mountain Falls voters. Thanks for your time.
All right, Rocco, thank you. Dick, did you want to speak on this as well?
Yes, yes, ma'am. I, I just want to point out, point out that the paid parking concept lacks any business plan. A business plan before you start a new business, like collecting for parking, best management practice is to actually run some figures and prepare a budget. Now, we've got lots of figures on speculation of income, but I haven't seen anything substantive as far as the cost to set up the program, manage it, and run it and contingencies. The RFP for the parking management contract is not very good. It has too many demands of the contractor, and if I was a contractor, I would not bid on it. So that needs a lot of work before it goes anyplace. I would join everybody else that said this. Let's go cautiously. Let's go for the cup, for a couple of years and try the ambassador program and signage and see how well it helps us before we jump into paid parking. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Dick. Kathleen Morrow.
I live at 10965 Belvedere Avenue. I watch the hikers go by here and I wave at them. They're always friendly. And this last year, there were a real lot of them. Before I lived here in Green Mountain Falls, I lived in Manitou Springs for many, many years. So when this came up for our, for our little town here, I went back to Manitou and started checking with friends and business owners and just getting a sense of when they put paid parking in down there, what, what happened? How was it for the town? Jonathan, the, the, you, it seemed like you covered so many, so much. It was very well-rounded what you presented. And I want to thank you for that because it seems like there's a possibility where we are going to be going at it more slowly and more consciously than Manitou did. Because what it did in Manitou was the business owners told me that for several weeks, until people got used to it, they had no business. It almost crunched their businesses. We also, the locals also noticed there was suddenly a change from the friendly little artist town that they were. It suddenly became a tourist town. And the atmosphere changed. So that concerns me. Then another thing that happened is that, I think, Judy, you brought this up, is that when paid parking went in in Manitou, the, the visitors started driving through neighborhoods looking for places to park off the main drag where there was, where they would have to pay. They were, they parked all along neighborhoods at that time. Nobody appreciated that. And then one of the things that also people told me is that residents, I hear you saying, Jonathan, to have some, to have free parking for residents. That would be very, very important because I know the residents in Manitou had a very difficult time. They just stopped going downtown. They stopped shopping in town because there was nowhere to park without paying. So those, those were just some thoughts that I had come up. I totally agree with Judy that we go cautiously and slowly. And, and yes, I think signage would be a place to start. Some clear and also beautiful signage. So that's all. Thank you.
Kathleen, thank you. Todd, did you want to speak? You spoke earlier, but I didn't know if you had any.
No, no, I, I, I said everything, so I'm good.
All right, just wanted to make sure on that. I think that is everyone. Board?
Jesse?
Jesse? Hey, Jesse.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Jonathan for all, all the hard work on this and, and, and be grateful for all the community support and information that we got. I think Jonathan's base recommendations to the board are things that everyone agrees on based on, on all the conversations and on the surveys. And I, I do think that that's a fair place to start with those base recommendations. I understand going cautiously and slowly, but I also understand that it's February and the hiking season is just around the corner. And I'm going to be so glad to have this bad weather gone and, and be doing something else, but I think Jonathan left us a great place to start with his base recommendations, and I just wanted to thank him for that.
All right, Jesse, thank you very much. Matt, is there anyone else that I missed?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm checking chat, my emails right now, just in case.
All right. Board, do you have any questions for John as we get started? Well, I'll start with Tiani.
I have a question.
Catherine.
Sorry. Um, well, I really like the idea of the first couple of hours being free. I'm sure that's not something that ever happened in Manitou and, or downtown or anywhere I can think of. So that, I mean, other than maybe a parking garage, you might get like half an hour free or something like that. But, but I can see where that would be helpful to the businesses, but I was wondering about making adjustments. I know you said we could easily make adjustments to how many days a week such a thing might be implemented. How easy is it to tweak something like the hours?
Very, very.
Costs, sorry.
It is very easy. I will tell you a little bit about our experience with our program. We have what is widely known as the most progressive paid parking program in the country. We give free parking to almost anybody for any reason because the goal of our program is not necessarily to generate revenue. It does generate revenue, but it's to be welcoming to our visitors, to our town who come to eat and to shop and to explore history and to go rafting and fishing and all those wonderful activities. And so basically, what we do is we, we know that we're going to do that. We use this as a tool to be more welcoming for our visitors. I am the vice president of our Chamber of Commerce. I'm also, like I said, the director of our Economic Development Corporation in Clear Creek County, and we worked extensively with the business community here to figure out what a visit to our businesses is. And we use that to build our free paid parking program in our downtown area. One thing that I heard from your community that I think you guys should really talk about, especially if you do go down this route, is how could you convert a hiker into a beer drinker or somebody go get a sandwich after work or after the hike or whatever? And I think there's some opportunities here depending on if you do have a contractor where maybe if they come and they buy, you know, dinner and a drink or something like that, maybe that cost is reduced or is extracted from the, from the fee of the parking. That's entirely possible to do. It's entirely possible to give them a next free visit. There's a lot of ways to handle that, especially if you think about that kind of downtown core lot right by the lake and the businesses there. So I would say that your contractors are going to be flexible. To the point about the RFP being restrictive, that is a very, very common contract in Colorado. I can think of at least three municipalities that I know that use it. And of course, you can always make it a little bit easier if you want to, but this is kind of commonly accepted practices. You know, you give them seven days' notice and they'll change pretty much whatever you want.
Well, I know that I really like the idea of encouraging hikers to participate in the businesses. I mean, currently, we have a lot of, you know, unsubstantiated, is the word I'm looking for, but we have a lot of local data that maybe hikers eat and maybe hikers buy souvenirs, but this would be a really good way for us to all gather data, if nothing else, and it would encourage hikers to become consumers. Because on, on the opposite side, we have a lot of people who say, they don't eat here. They take their picnic and they drive off. So I'd love to encourage the business.
That was the reason I recommended a two-year pilot program. You could also go with a one-year pilot, but it's better to have two seasons in a, in a study. That will give you the quantitative data that you need. You'll know exactly how many parking spaces are utilized, where they're utilized, how long people stay, what they're doing. Like you'll have a very, very rich trove of data. To the point about qualitative data on the survey, you want a survey like that to be qualitative. That's a fairly common practice in political science. You want to be able to express, when you're trying to express in a problem in a community, you want people to speak freely and honestly. And I think that that's one of the greatest things that happened in this survey. And in the engagement is people spoke freely and honestly, for sure. We definitely understand the opinions of everybody in relation to parking. But we do have some opportunities where you guys could get for almost no cost to you, free data that you can use to kind of build on your economic vitality in the future and just to better manage these problems from that kind of quantitative approach.
Jonathan, I, you know, it sounds like most people are in favor of an agreement with the idea of creating better signage throughout the town. I was wondering if you could speak to rolling out, you know, improved signage in Idaho Springs. You know, how long did it take for the town to progress from interim signage to getting to the kind of nicer looking signage? And I guess, are there any specific plans or recommendations for best practices for signage? You know, we've heard in the past that we should have a lot more positive signage of directing people where to park rather than saying, don't park here. Are there, you know, other resources that we could look at if we do adopt a better signage plan?
Yeah, it's actually been a really, you know, it's one of the most exciting things you can do when you work for a town. Because you're literally putting your town's brand where every single eye that comes is going to see it. And so it's really exciting. I don't know how familiar you all are with Idaho Springs. This is the place my family came in Colorado. We were the, like, basically the third family here. And so I have really deep roots in this community. And one of the things that's really important to us here is rust. And I know that sounds dumb, but it's a mining community and rust is important. So these are our wayfinding signs that I just finished. I'm just going to show you. This is our new historic district signs. And these are actually rust, real rusted metal. And therefore, they hang on our historic light bulbs. We used to have wood signs very similar to what Green Mountain Falls has, but we weren't able to replicate it with our wind loads. So we built these ones that really hearken back to our our kind of history as a gold mining town. Those signs that I just saw, I showed you were $400 each per street sign, which is expensive. And like I said, we have a very large welcome sign in our community right off the highway that is very similar to that and is is kind of the same trends, but just welcome to Idaho Springs. We love that you come. And so those those signage, that signage plan, we really wanted to make sure that all the colors and standards were good. And I think that's, like I said, your artist community that you have in Green Mountain Falls, I think is already very engaged in that. And I think that that work could continue. And then, you know, it's about funding. And I think one of the tricky things is is that you're going to probably want to go to grants for this. There are some Great Outdoors Colorado Grants, which is of course funded through lottery money primarily. And then there are some DOLA Grants, Department of Local Affairs, that you can use for this project as well. In our stakeholder meetings, I didn't mention it, but the fire district, there may be potential to build a signage kind of area, like right when you come off the highway. That could be beneficial to both organizations. And I think that that what I would do personally is I would probably go through a process very similar to this and and just have that stakeholder investment in the wayfinding signage. It's just such a critical piece of who you are as a community and an opportunity to build something beautiful and lasting. So I think that's why I didn't make a really strong recommendation to like buy signage right now. I just think that you need to, you know, you need to look at that holistically. The what happened to that signage grant? Goco had too many requests. It was a very competitive grant round. But there's other opportunities for funding that'll be coming soon. The other thing to remember in terms of pricing, parking, if you're coming for it in a in a town with a tourism-based economy, we need to think about different demographics of user. We have community members, which is why, which is residents of the town. And then maybe in the immediate outlying area, maybe as far as Woodland Park, say. Like, I don't know exactly where you would say somebody identifies with being a part of the Green Mountain Falls community. But we definitely heard from people from close outside that that want to be included in the community. And you shouldn't include them in your community because that makes you stronger. But if you have somebody who's coming from Colorado Springs or Denver and is specifically coming to those trails to park, their expectations for costs and tourism management are different than just a regular community member. That's why the structure to give residents and potentially community members free parking is so important. Because there you're already essentially paying into your system through taxes. Like, you're paying for your roads, you're paying for your trash, all of those things. Visitors, especially when that visitor traffic gets heavier, they're not paying into the system the same way. And their expectation of what a cost is to park, like, say, $14. When you think about that in terms of what it costs to manage to park at Manitou all day or in Denver or any of these other kind of tourism oriented places, it's actually relatively low. It's less than $4 an hour to park for 10 hours, which is pretty long. And you wouldn't be charging like overnight. So I know there's been also some questions about short-term rentals or folks that that park in the lots when the snow is so heavy that they cannot drive up the hills. We want to protect those community members as much as possible. We want to make sure that there's no impacts on them, no impacts on the business community. We're just charging these people who are sitting in the lots, not sitting at tables, drinking beers or eating hamburgers or whatever the case may be. And we want to make sure that with that money, we're also able to provide them with a really good experience so that they come back. And it's really positive.
Jonathan, I have a question about differences, the possibility of having different rates for different areas in town. So that, you know, like the the places that are closest to the businesses, they'd be less attractive to hikers, perhaps. I know, I know there's, we we'd love to turn hikers into consumers. And I think there's some potential for that. But I do think a lot of hikers are not going to necessarily head down to the business area. And I just want to put out there, I know this was, I don't think this was something that was addressed, but I, in my experience, people who pay nothing for their experience are more likely to to abuse the situation. And I know it's controversial about whether hikers leave trash or not, but some do. And I just think that if they are more invested in their experience, they might be more respectful for the experience.
I didn't put it in the survey results, but there were more than five people who told me that people defecated in their yards last year, which is a major issue from a public health standpoint and just from a that shouldn't happen standpoint. In terms of zones, you can definitely do what you said. We have had up to four zones operating in our city, depending on what's happening. We have a teacher zone because our elementary school is right in the middle of the thick of everything. So we protect our teacher parking. And then we have a free zone, a low-cost zone, well, kind of like a maybe low cost, but a longer term parking zone where it's cheaper to park long term and then a more expensive place. So we kind of basically created incentive to park further out if you're able to. And that does work pretty well. And you could do that in this model very easily.
I just want to say also that I I really appreciate all the work you've put in. It was great to be able to see the survey results the way you had it laid out. And I know it doesn't address all the issues or everybody's concerns, but I thought, you know, it's kind of a good snapshot of where the community stands, at least as far as the 179 folks that responded.
I agree. Margaret, I haven't heard from you.
Well, first of all, thank you, Jonathan, for all of the work you put into this. My only concern, my only comment is, you know, the suggestion for donation boxes, I'm feeling like besides cash management, it's just not feasible because it opens it up to vandalism. And people are not as honest as you think they are. And I really, I really know for sure that that's not a road we want to go down. So.
I think you'll find it's an unreliable revenue source, too. If we want to take, that's kind of where I came. I have had conversations with many of you in this room on both sides of this issue. And this is one that I struggled with for a while. Because if there is a way to reduce the problems that the town is experiencing demonstrably with a lesser approach, I think it should be taken. The problem is, is that you have one town marshal who is literally standing on his head, playing the drums, playing the harmonica and still giving the town a wonderful amount of service. That man is a hero. He's a great asset to your community and he can't do everything, especially when it comes to prioritization of hazards and safety problems. And so we have this issue where he doesn't have the capacity to enforce restrictions that might limit people from staying forever and ever in the parking lot, which is what really needs to happen to reduce congestion. We need to have like some mechanisms to control for that. And if we don't have the mechanisms, it's not, it 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 becomes a question of adequacy. There's a man named Brunori. He wrote about tax principles, which is a little bit different. But generally, what he said is that you should not create a tax or a fee unless it can adequately create a revenue source that can pay for the service that's required. A donation box isn't going to do that. A parking fee will, and it will also improve the quality of life of every resident in your town. And I can say that from my own experience here. I'd just like to remind everybody that this parking program is going to be an illustration of you. It's not an illustration of Manitou Springs or Idaho Springs or Breckenridge or anywhere else. It is Green Mountain Falls. And your program is going to be built to promote the values that you believe in that are important. And I think that that's something that you guys have a great opportunity to do right now. I would highly recommend that if you do go with a paid parking program or you do go with something else, the stakeholder meeting that we held last August could be repeated in a similar timeframe with similar participants or more participants. And you could go through whatever program you create, see if it's working and see if there's changes that need to be made. That's also the reason that I wanted to come with the idea of a two-year contract, a trial program, to see if if you could address the problem with these with these measures. If it doesn't address the problem, then there's a question of whether you should do it. So I think that that's that's really the basis for why I made the recommendations I did.
So I just want to comment on one other thing. You know, Rocco, bring a solution instead of just bitching about the bathrooms. Because we understand that they do not have the capacity, they are not able to meet what has happened with the influx of people. They aren't able to keep up. And we're working on that. And I think it's really unfair to say that we decided to keep them closed because there wasn't really a choice. And please, please, please offer a solution instead of just complaining and telling everybody that what we're doing is wrong. Because we're doing the best that we can.
Mayor, I have one more comment, too. Our town, just as a as a thing that might interest you all, we were able to secure enough money for a grant to put brand new bathrooms in our park, public restrooms for the same problems and reasons that you guys have needed it after one year of parking management. And it has been amazing. They're great. They're a modular product with what they call prison-grade facilities, so they don't break. They're easy to take care of. And we can serve the people who come here to recreate.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
So Mayor, I was called out specifically by trustee Peterson. Do I have a chance to rebut?
If you do so gracefully, I will certainly allow it.
Okay, I just want to remind the trustees that the mayor had some kind of moral reservations about opening restrooms last summer. The conversation was about people defecating throughout the town. That directly stemmed from the decisions you made. You need to accept responsibility for that, trustee Peterson. Don't call me out. You had a solution and you closed the restrooms.
All right, let's step away from the potty talk for a minute. I'm going to make a statement about that, and I'm going to make it one time. Now, it's completely true that when those restrooms were built, they are a composting toilet. They were not built for the capacity that we have seen with the incredible increases in the trails. And not only before, not only during COVID, but before, we've had an incredible influx of people. Those toilets weren't built for that capacity. And we found that out. And we have been trying for many years to try to make that better. And yes, I certainly had a moral decision to make last year due to COVID. I won't walk that back. When people are telling me, scientists are telling me that we need to make a decision about the health of our community, I will always step on the side of health and safety. We resolved it the best we could when we brought in porta-potties. And that is the end of that conversation. Today's conversation right now is about managed parking. We have a lot of conversation in this town about managed parking. This is not a yes or a no, as in, oh, we're throwing out parking meters. We're trying to ruin the town. We're trying to destroy our image. That's completely not so. In fact, I think this has a lot of good to make this a better town for the quality of life of people that live live here and people that come to visit. I think we have an opportunity here. I understand the voice of caution. I also understand the phrase, nothing ventured, nothing gained. This could be a two-year program, two summers. The time to do it is now. If you sat on this side of the virtual table, you would have heard over and over and over, we have problems with hikers. We have problems with parking. We have problems with signage. And this group has stepped up to try to solve that. Jonathan has come in. He has come up with some very valuable data. And Board, I would like to see us deliberate on what is before us.
So I just have a question regarding some of the universal recommendations. It sounds like those we can, you know, in general, as a town, it sounds like agree upon for the most part. How long would it take to to roll out either interim signage, you know, get, do a stakeholder group? How long would that take? And could we get something in place for this summer?
I think this might be a question for me. This is Angie. So, you know, if the board is interested in moving forward with the recommendations with a consultant, John Kane, then we could go ahead and put together a draft ordinance and a draft RFP and have that on the next agenda for approval. And if there were any modifications in addition that could be discussed at that time or discussed now and then incorporated into that draft for your review, if you were to approve that at the next meeting, then we could post the RFP and have a contract ready for the next meeting with a third-party contractor and potentially have installation and this up and running sometime in April. I would like to just point out in general, I just want to reiterate the process timeline and how how good of a job John really did on this and the time that he took with individuals to speak to and his report and just individually on the telephone with people about specific concerns to just inform and educate and understand. And it's been going on since August, and I think we're we're really in a good place. And I'm fully in support of 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 his recommendations as well as, you know, any that the board might deem equitable and just. That's all I have to say.
And I guess I just have another question for just for the board is, you know, how much of last last summer's increased usage do we think is due to the fact that the incline was shut down at that time? And do we anticipate that there's going to be that amount of use this upcoming summer? You know, I also recognize that there may potentially be that installation that's coming up. I don't know when or, you know, when that would roll out and how that would impact things. But it just, it seems like there are some kind of external variables that that may be kind of clouding things.
Well, and I think we're always going to have external variables. I totally agree that the closing of the incline had an impact. But Waldo Canyon has been shut down for years. And we saw a huge surge when Waldo got shut down. And it doesn't seem to be opening any soon, anytime soon. And my personal opinion, the cat's out of the bag with the trails in Green Mountain Falls. I think people who came here last year are going to come more. In fact, the people I know that hiked are going to come again. That's great. But we need to manage it also for people who live here.
Can I also mention just that the incline is going to remain with restricted access that you have to register to be able to climb it, and they are enforcing that. So there's there's a limited number of people that can utilize the access or the incline going forward on a permanent basis.
That's good to know.
I would like to see us move forward. I would like to see us move forward with a, a pilot program. And, you know, to be able to, to start that this summer. And so we can, you know, begin to see what works for us, what doesn't work. I just don't, don't think that doing nothing or collecting more data without having some kind of pilot program in place is really going to be helpful.
So is that a motion?
That is a motion. I'd like to move forward on this.
Thank you. Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Board, is there any further discussion on this item?
So I, I am in favor of moving forward with increased signage. I, in kind of recognizing that I think we do need to take some caution with any type of plan, would want to limit any potential pilot program to a lower amount of times so that we could get some quantitative data.
Are you comfortable with proceeding with an, an RFP so that we can roll some of this and get data? We can consider, all right. There's a motion on this in a second. If there is no further discussion, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
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 That motion passes. Tiani, I think especially as we're putting together the RFP, we'll get some conversation in there about how and what and when. Jen, you have something?
I'm good. I'm happy to continue being of assistance where I can in that process. If there's anything I can do for the town and I'll also create a final draft of my report that is much more beautiful and appropriate for, you know, every, just for a community use that reflects our conversation here tonight as well. So I'll give that to town staff for, for your approval as well.
I would appreciate that. I appreciate the work you put in on this. It's obvious that it's a lot. I do appreciate everyone who has commented and has worked through the process because it is obvious that their opinions and comments have been taken into consideration and have been duly noted. So I appreciate Matt and John. I continue to support you working with Angie on reports and RFPs. All right. The next item is correspondence. I don't believe we received any this time, did we? Didn't think so?
Nope.
Thank you, Matt. The next item is trustee reports. I do not have a report. Do I?
Nothing to add at this time.
Yeah, I appreciate the work on parks, rec and trail. I know that that's gearing up right now.
And thank you to all those committee members. They have a lot on their plate to sort through, so they're working hard.
They do. I appreciate it. Catherine?
I have nothing to report this time.
Thank you. Hopefully you'll be getting more with Chambers as this proceeds. Maybe this will help Chamber commerce out. Margaret, do you have a report?
No, nothing additional.
Everyone sign up to help Margaret with Rock Day. That's coming up. Are there any further committee reports? Seeing none, let's do the staff reports. Angie?
I just have one, one thing that I think notable of reporting. I was able to get a meeting with the United States Forest Service and with CSU, all of us together. And we did, did set an appointment for May 1st, once the ice melts, well, the first week in May, actually, to go and evaluate the, the trails and the potential encroachment issues. And then they will, you know, take recommendations back to, to their boards as well, their higher-ups, and then bring a recommendation back to us. So we should have some resolve hopefully on the, the trails challenges we've been, been facing with the encroachments here this summer. But just, I want to manage expectations in that regard that we are meeting with them the first week in, in May, but it will take some time for them to put together those recommendations. And so it's not going to be like 10 days later, it'll all be resolved. We are, you know, it's been 30 years in the making, so, and we'll work through it together. And it's, it's really nice to know that they're interested in working as a team to, to get through that.
I appreciate you working with them. It is a big issue. It has been a long time coming and it's nice to know that we can work together and make sure that those trails work well for everyone, including our neighbors. Matt, do you have a report?
I do not have anything further to add this evening. Thank you, John, for the presentation. It was really informative, learned a lot.
Matt, thank you. Thanks for hanging in there. Look at you. Two meetings in. Go Matt.
Thank you.
Virgil, do you have a report? You have to unmute. There you are.
Couldn't find the unmute button again. As you know, we, we do have one new reserve that has started working for us. Sam Yanis, he's also a police officer up at Palmer Lake. And he has decided that he wants to come and spend some time up here with us. I'm in the process of getting evaluations on another individual by the name of Sandro Adzeli, who's a former police officer over at Cripple Creek and Cubs highly recommended. He should be starting here within the next month or two.
That's exciting. Looking forward to that. So thank you for that. As always, thank you everyone for your hard work and we will just keep on, keep on. I do appreciate everyone's participation. You know, one thing about Green Mountain Falls, we're passionate. You never know what we're going to be passionate about. But we have passion. So thank you all. And with that, this meeting is adjourned at eight 57.
Have a good evening, everybody.
Good night.
Have a magical night.
Have a magical night.
Magical.
Magical.